Welcome to the zoning board of appeals. Please silence cell phones and note that this meeting is being taped by FCTV. Any private party recording this hearing? If so, please step forward to the podium to request permission. I'll introduce the board and the staff. On my far right is Mark Fineran, who's a member. Next is Scott Peterson, a member. On my closest right is Frank Duffy, the clerk. My name's Suzanne Murphy, chair. To my left is James Morse, vice chair. To his left is Tony Petrucci, associate member, and Nick Hahn, associate member. And then we have Noreen Stockman, our zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, an office assistant. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws in reviewing and voting on this, on any application. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public and to allow a full, fair discussion of the project prior to closing the hearing process and reaching a decision. Number one, to begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and to read pertinent information from the file. Two, the applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, but time may be extended by a vote of the board. Three, the board will then question the applicant. And four, the public will be invited to comment. Comment should be limited to two minutes and be strictly related to the proposal. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair and should come to the podium. State your name and address for the record. Please speak into the microphone. It will amplify your voice and record audio for FCTV. We also have any, a time for any person seeking to make a public statement on anything that's not before the board tonight. We have two continued 40B hearings. Does anyone wish to speak a public comment? We're all set. So first at bat, we have 85 Brookhill Road, which is a continued 40B.
Good evening. Nick Marioni, representing the applicant. Since the last time we were here, the peer review engineer sent out his comments on the engineering and storm order. We, as recently as Tuesday, had addressed those comments and revised it to storm order report and sent them back to the engineer for further review. Also sent in a revised waiver request, which you should have. And we're pretty confident that we've addressed all the concerns that the engineer had, but obviously we're gonna have to wait till he weighs in on that, which he hasn't had time to review yet. So I think I also submitted revised elevations. And we showed templates for fire engine and trash truck turnaround on the site. Also site distance, other things that came up, had been a concern, snow storage.
Is the waiver list, the revised waiver list, September 30? You know if that's a date?
I have it right here.
Yeah? Okay.
Yes.
So I don't think we should attack the waiver list tonight either till we do engineering, right?
You have your peer here tonight.
No, that's at the end.
Oh, we'll go over it. Okay.
So that's my update from the last time we were here. If you have any questions or you'd like to hear from the engineer, I'd be happy to answer questions if you have some right now.
Anybody have any questions for Nick before we hear from the engineer? You do. Go ahead.
Did I hear you say you gave us revised elevations for all the units?
Yeah, they should have been submitted with the, well, I gave you revised elevation on the big buildings.
On the big, alright, that's what I saw.
Yeah, the other buildings didn't change. I just get sent in colored elevations.
I saw the one that was colorized.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, let me, let me just qualify that. It also, by revised, besides coloring them up, we added the sprinkler rooms, the storage rooms, and the laundry rooms on the ends of the building. So that may not have been on the previous ones you saw, but they should be on the ones you have now.
These, I think? It's on this one.
This, this elevation here is the laundry room. The other end of the building has a sprinkler room and the storage room, individual storage rooms for the residents. So this is new on this end of the building.
Do you have the original elevation handed?
I do. Where is it? Is it part of this? No, I'm trying to find mine too.
The elevation is part of this?
Pardon me?
Part of this?
No, it's the, the colored elevation was a separate sheet on top, that should have been given to you with that. Noreen, excuse me. Oh, okay.
I'll take one and pass it.
There they are.
Noreen's gonna come.
So this is what it looked like before.
And then can you, again?
So we added, we added dormers to the front. We took the bulkheads out because there's slabs now and added the sprinkler rooms, laundry rooms, and storage rooms on the end of the building.
Okay. Thank you.
And those revised drawings you have reflect those changes on the layout sheet.
That looks a little better.
It does.
Go ahead. I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
When we, as a board, look at this type of plan, as we had up there, should we be able to, in the conditions or the findings reference, because it has no notations on it, a plan, because this shows some amount of detail on the, for instance, the dormer peak areas, the support columns, railing, stuff like that. Now, I realize that this is all you have to do really for a 40B, but my concern, speaking as one board member, is that when it comes to affordable housing, I think it's important to provide the folks that rent in these something of real quality and something they can come home to that, you know, makes you feel kind of good about the whole thing. So this is hard to reference. It doesn't say anything on it. It's just a colorized version, and of course, we added laundry rooms. Can we somehow reference, would it be objectionable to you for us to reference a plan like this that we might be able to number, something of that nature? So at least that we would expect, and the town would expect, that there's a little bit of detail included.
That's a very reasonable request. We actually have the architectural plans revised to match that.
We do.
Which does give the siding material, the trim material, the deck and rail material.
It matches this, just not color.
It matches that. It's just not color. It's just, you know, very black and white architectural drawings. So I, I thought that those were submitted. Some, I'm looking for them on my thing here, because we have revised, all the plans have been revised by the architect to reflect those changes.
I just want the, the town, the board, to be able to, or somewhat to be able to rely on what you presented as what it will likely be in the end. That's all.
Very reasonable request.
Can I ask a question? Nick?
I'm sorry.
Is this the plan that's gonna show where sheds are and things like that and the, and the snow?
We don't, we don't have sheds. We have garages. We have three garages shown on the plan.
So three garages for how many units?
Well, the garages aren't for the, for the residents to park in. They're for us to put equipment in and...
For you to put equipment in?
For us to put equipment in.
Are the humans allowed to put equipment in?
Pardon me?
Are the people that live there allowed to put equipment in?
No, they have basements and they have storage rooms on the end of the building.
So you're providing zero storage other than the cellar that they have to go around to a bulkhead?
Yes.
Now, these are slabs, aren't they?
No, just the, just the big buildings are slabs, yes.
Yeah.
My other question I have is, when you drive down this road, you're gonna see the dwellings, you know, they all look kind of cohesive. And this is a very disjointed plan in my mind. Then you have these two large buildings on your right that look like they don't fit in. That's just my opinion. I don't know about anybody else up here, but they just don't look like they fit in to me. What's the size of those buildings?
It looks like 100 feet long by 36 feet wide on the 12 unit.
On the big one? And what's the distance to your lot line? None of that's listed on the plan I have.
Well, that, that should be shown on the engineering plans, I believe.
24 feet.
24 on, on the large buildings? Oh, down there, okay. I was looking up that.
And 24 feet here. That's from the deck, not from the building.
Yeah, see, my plan doesn't...
From the deck and the slab, 24 feet.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, there it is. I see it, okay. I just, I just think they make it a very disjointed type of development. You drive up and this side looks like you're in a dorm, and then the other side looks like duplexes, and it looks rather normal. But the other side looks like I'm going back to college and I'm looking for my dorm room.
I think, I think it looks like very affordable units for hot people who can't afford one, two, or three bedroom units in town.
Now, is there a second floor living on that? Now, how are they putting their bikes in the basement?
They have a storage shed.
They have a storage shed?
No, not a shed. They have a storage room attached to the end of the building. They have, they have the storage room. So inside, inside the storage room, which everybody has access to, are individual storage bins.
Okay.
What size are those?
3 by 9. So certainly deep enough to put bicycles in and other things. And there would probably be chicken wire cages with individual lock sets on them, you know?
And where is the dumpster on here?
It's down by the three-car garage in the front.
To the right of the three-car garage?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to the right of it, yeah. Dumpster and recycle.
And when you have the Amazon trucks come, where are they all? Just to the front door of each dwelling?
Say that again, please.
Amazon trucks, FedEx, all that? Where are they going?
Well, they'll have, this, on the mailboxes, there'll be package boxes. That doesn't mean that Amazon won't deliver to the front of a unit if they have a unit number, but they, the mailbox structure will also have boxes on it for post office and Amazon to put boxes in, depending on the size.
And is that gonna be secure?
Yes.
Okay. Like, like a swipe card or how is that gonna work?
No, no, there's locks.
Locks?
There's locks on them, yeah.
And then the snow is back on the kids' playground, right? Is that this one?
It's one of the spots, yeah.
Yeah, I thought so. Okay, that's all I have for now.
Okay.
Anyone else up here have any other question?
You mentioned back in the July 11 hearing that you would look into some solar options?
Yeah, we, we are looking into that. We think we're actually pretty close to making a deal, not just for solar on the buildings, but for electric charging station, at least one, somewhere down near the mailbox and the dumpster. There's a little extra parking down there. Excuse me.
Yeah. About to sheet nine, I believe it's sheet nine septic, and you know, our peer review engineer can, will walk us through also, but I just get your thoughts on it. Yeah, go for it. Different sheet nine. Go back on here.
Okay.
I know the engineer will speak to it too, but...
Can you just give me a little bit of information on, on the design component where you have the potential future area for an advanced treatment septic? I'm looking at the, the other three chambers. You have 11,000 and a 14,007, and then it's like potential area. It just doesn't seem like that all fits between having the ability for those units to leach and then to have a potential future AI unit. But that's been signed off by you, and that's gonna be one of my questions for you also. But could you walk me through that to your knowledge or?
That's an engineering issue, yeah. You want to address it now?
No, well, let's wait. And then the only other thing, you know, as we continue to wrestle with future potential costs for the affordable units, I was wondering about your thoughts on potentially escrowing some money, not in years one, two, or three, but after the project's kind of up and built, to potentially put some money in escrow for, if you are, if the development needs to be put into the AI units, that you would have some funding there for the affordable units to access. Joe, well...
I think there's equity in the project, that if it needed to be done, it could be refinanced. But you know that they're running sewer right down Brookhill Road.
We all hope, yeah.
Well, I think, I think that part's been approved, if I'm not mistaken. Pardon me?
Not to be attached to...
We can't connect to it yet.
Yeah, right. I don't think there's any plan. That's, that's for the...
There's probably no sewer here. Yeah, but it's going by here.
Yeah, I think it's a forced lane. There's gonna be no potential to connect. So I believe the future is that you're gonna be in the D- night. I, I could be wrong, but I'm quite sure that's the way it's gonna work.
Yeah, maybe, maybe you are right. Nobody seems to know, but if they're ever gonna solve this denitrification issue, it's not gonna be done with denitrification systems, it's gonna be done with sewerage.
That's a major part of the plan.
I know it is, but...
Areas of town that are never gonna get sewed, and for the most part of them, they're gonna be north of 28, which is where you're located. So, I mean, you, you can definitely count on this, you know, from my understanding, you, having to use that area for, to turn this thing D- night. And, you know, the, the timeframe is, well, it's up to the DEP, but, I mean, you know, you probably got the same as that capacity, you know, five, six, seven years, but, you know, I think you can count on it, you know? It's all gonna be on you anyway. So, you know?
Right.
I, I do like the escrow idea as, as well, but, you know, I mean, I'm sure that can be conditioned somehow or another, but, I mean, if the DEP says you're gonna have to do it, you're gonna have to do it, you know? And I'm pretty sure everything north of 28 is gonna get it, and the south of 28's gonna get the sewer. So, I mean, anyway, I, that's how it's gonna work. So, I mean, as long as your reserve area is good, but somebody's gonna pay for it, but, I mean, your, your equity, you know, I don't know exactly how that, but, I mean, we, we can't, it's my feeling that we can't be granting or whatever, one of these 40Bs and then have the tenants in the affordable units have any kind of liability or whatever, because we'll put them into the unit and then we'll have to take them back out again, and I certainly want that happen to no one.
Yeah, I know, I'm really following your line of thought there. I don't know what the affordable tenants versus market tenants have to do with it, but...
They don't, they don't have anything to do with it.
No.
And it's just a developer who has to put money in.
Yeah, yeah.
But the individual tenants have no responsibility.
No, I understand, but there's other ones, like where it's gonna be homeownership. I just, it's gonna be all on you.
That's a different story when it's homeownership.
Yeah, I understand, absolutely.
Are you good, Mark? You all set?
Yeah, and the other thing, I just wanna comment. I mean, this, this is much nicer. I mean, and now that we're into safe harbor, so to speak, I mean, I honestly, that first, and just like everybody else on the board, that first attempt with, with the first rendition of this was certainly unacceptable. This, this is a little more appealing, I mean, but the other one was just absolutely a non-starter in my book, you know? And I do appreciate this part of it, but it's also was a necessity.
May I add on to Mark's comment? I don't mean to take away from you, but when you're, you're talking about this plan right now.
Yeah, as opposed to the original one that he...
You gotta understand that this plan is much nicer than the architectural plan I referred to.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And will not be, because this has landscaping on it, will not become part of the, potentially the decision, only the architectural. So if you want this plan, we've gotta mark it up as an exhibit somehow and get them to agree that this is what it's gonna look like, because you've got some pretty significant expense in landscaping here, which makes a whole lot of difference. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, I mean, that's, that's my thinking exactly. I mean, the, the first rendition or whatever was totally unacceptable, and I think we all agreed on that.
One more follow-up, sorry. Were you asking for the waiver in the Great Pond Overlay District for our next meeting, could you do a rough estimate with your engineer on what the nitrogen load, estimated nitrogen load is for the project on an annualized basis?
Nitrogen load?
Correct. You have the 40 units on a per-year basis, and what do you think that potential nitrogen load is?
Okay.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to add one more thing to what I was saying, as personally...
No pressure.
I still think this is a bit crowded, with the 40 units.
I wish the two dorm styles were just like the rest and it would just be cohesive if, when you drove through.
Yeah.
It's very disjointed this way. Jim, go ahead.
Mr. Marioni, just want to turn back to the three garages. You've got three different buildings and seven listed spots. How many vehicles are gonna be servicing this development?
I mean, well, this is, the owner has a snowplow and a truck dedicated for that. He also has a Bobcat. He's got other, ride-on mowers and other equipment that he uses. We, we're gonna dedicate at least one bay to just replacement screens, smoke detectors, light bulbs, those types of things, not just for this project, but he's got several others right in stone throw from here.
Reason I ask and my concern is I just don't want these additional garage bays becoming essentially de facto contractor's yard or storage to be able to unrelated to this project.
Yeah, you, well, unrelated in that, the same owner has units over on Cardinal Place, which is across from Kenyon's Market. He's got several along Main Street, corner of Homestead, at the corner of Central. So he wants to be able to have a maintenance area for, so he can manage and maintain all of, all of his properties from there.
I don't think so.
So I don't have, I don't have a problem with the condition that it's for, not for commercial, other than for his own use, you know?
How many, how many units in total you're talking about maintaining out of these garages?
Please, after this, he's probably gonna have close to 80 right here in Thomas?
I think they got enough truck and car traffic already. I don't know if that's really...
No, we're not trying to get contractor bays out of this.
No, I know, I just, I, I think the people that live nearby, the abutters, are getting plenty of traffic already.
Yeah.
I think that this should be self-sufficient in what it needs, not necessarily. I understand what the developer would like, but I think that this is pretty well, you've stretched this out pretty well already. Maybe have them look to do that at another development, in my opinion. Service this one in.
I hate to keep peppering you with nitrogen, but can you tell me why you believe that you don't have to comply with 247.2B, which is that you need to tell this town, you have to do an assessment of what type of nitrogen load you'll add to the town by putting these buildings here? And you're asking for a waiver to do that, but we've not yet waived that bylaw. That won't come till the end if we do that. Why would you refuse to do an analysis of what the nitrogen, additional nitrogen load would be to the coastal pond overlay? Let me restate that a little bit away. You were asking for a waiver for 247.2B paragraph two, and in that, it requires anyone with, and I'll get to this part too, with five acres or more, or five lots or more, that they have to do an assessment of the additional nitrogen load to the community, to the overlay district by building it. Now, this is neither five acres nor is it five lots, but it's well above that in number of units, so we can pretty much forget, put aside the five acre and the five lot part of it. Why would you, do you believe you should not comply with that? Why should we waive that? This is a very serious issue in the coastal pond overlay district. Our engineer is going to, our peer engineer's gonna tell us that, he's deferring to the Board of Health. The Board of Health is talking about mapping the town, and we're best to put IA systems, which you're talking about a sewer line going down Brookhill that you'll never connect, well, may never connect to, but yet the town is going to end up suffering if you use a Title V system by additional nitrogen load. So I just want to get on the record, why do you believe we should waive the requirement reviewed to demonstrate what additional nitrogen load you're gonna add to the coastal pond overlay district? Why should we waive that? Because we haven't yet.
Yeah, you asked, and why do I think the, you should, you asked me two things, I think. One was tell you what the nitrogen load would be, and the other was waive the requirement.
I would love to have you do the analysis and tell us what that nitrogen load would be.
Yeah, okay.
But without that analysis, you're asking us to waive, you put it in your waiver, your revised waivers, you're asking us to waive that part that says you don't have to do that. Why should we do that if you're not gonna put in a mitigation system or you're not gonna connect to the sewer system? Why should we do that?
The, the simple answer is it's cost prohibitive. I mean, you're looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars.
You're talking about, I'm not gonna get into the costs, all right? Well, actually, I can, you brought it up, so I can get into the costs. So the difference between a Title V system and an IA system is roughly, could be around $10,000 or more. Our peer engineer may disagree, because he's more on top of these things than I am. Maybe they're $32,000, $35,000 for an IA system versus $15,000 for a Title V, could be more, depending on the soil conditions. So I have to disagree, is what is more important? Is the health of the community more important or a few affordable units more important? Which one is more important for this community right now, given that we have the largest coastal pond overlay districts on Cape Cod? What is your feeling about this and why should we waive it?
The truth is, my feeling is this is a societal issue, not an individual developer's issue, just like this is something that needs to be addressed through sewer, just like traffic. We can't put traffic on us. You can't put hunger on the supermarkets. These are things that government, taxes are supposed to be here to take care of. Get the sewer line in. Get the sewer approved. We've been talking about this for 15 years.
But this board, but this board has no capacity to do that. It can only deal in the reality of its purview over this, and its purview is that we have to make a decision whether to waive that bylaw or not waive it, and there has to be a reason to waive it. And you're right now, what you've stated is that it's cost prohibitive, when in fact, over a number of years, you can amortize those costs off. It's a rental project. You just said earlier you have a lot of equity in it. You could amortize the cost of those IA systems. Now, that's my belief and only my belief on this board right this minute. Our peer engineer is saying that he's deferring the choice of going to an IA system to our Board of Health. Our Board of Health has requested you and I start on the plan to put in space for a future IA system, so somebody believes that there may be an issue here. And I'd like to get to the bottom of this before we cause more harm to our coastal pond overlay districts. And this is your... And this is your opportunity. It's a social thing, yeah. I mean, water quality is a social issue.
Well, we haven't got the money in the project to address, to put in that system. We know what it's going to cost. We saw what it cost the people down in Brick Hill Road on the houses, whatever it's called down by Christ Lutheran Church there. They spent $375,000 on that system for 28 houses. So, but my compromise would be if we're really concerned about that as a community, I could go to the firm with Affordable Housing Fund and see if they want to put up the money for the IA system for this.
I.
See how much they care.
Wherever you get it from is fine. This board is not in a place to have you, you know, give permission to hook up a system. So, Madam Chair, I just wanted to make sure that, because on the record, that the applicant is not willing to put any mitigation systems in place at this point in time.
That's the wrong term. It's not not willing. It's fiscally not responsible to do that because the project won't work. You know, everybody just keeps piling on to these projects. It's $60,000 in building permit fees, $60,000 in water connection fees, $35,000 in permitting fees between the town and mass housing. The Edison charges us to build an underground electric infrastructure, $130,000. So they have the privilege of charging our tenants for the electricity they use. It's all hidden costs that keep driving the number up.
Madam, I'll be done. With all due respect, thank goodness for 40B so that you can pile all these new units on top of these land that might only hold, what, maybe five units? So you've spread your costs across the land. I can only ask you why you would not, why we shouldn't waive it or should waive it. And I've got my answer, and I hope the board heard that answer. I appreciate that, thank you, Madam Chair.
There has never been any talk of any sewer north of Route 28. And to even suggest, as you did, that the town should sewer your project just doesn't fit into the plans.
Well, if a project gets nitrogen sensitive, why wouldn't it?
Why, what's going to happen is there are going to be areas that are going to be forced, in individual homes as well, that are going to be forced onto D-Nite systems. And this property is certainly highly likely to be one of them. So, I mean, it's coming down the pike and there's no sewer for you to hitch up to, regardless of whether it goes in front of your property or not. That's going to be a forced main, and there's going to be no hitching up to it. And like I said, there's no plans that I'm aware of, of anything north of 28 hitching up to any sewer. And they're going to tackle it with D-Nite systems and hopefully with some urine diversion to save the people so we don't have to drive more people out of this town with cars. And just to follow up on Tony's point, I mean, it would have been nice if you, nothing that makes a great deal of difference, it's kind of engineer stuff, but you should have quantified this a little more, what you were asking for.
What do you mean?
The amount of nitrogen that this will be adding to the payment or, you know, or the amount of nitrogen that this project's going to add. I mean, you're asking for us.
Well, I'm willing to get that now that you've asked for it, but you're saying I should have offered it.
Yeah, well, just, we have a number, it's not that difficult. I can't do it off the top of my head, but.
Anybody else up here have any further questions before Matt comes up? Nick, you all set down there?
All set.
Yep, you all set? Thank you. Matt, you want to come up?
Good evening. For the record, Matt Cody, Gilson, Thomas. As I said, we issued our peer review letter on September 5th and just recently this week received responses. So obviously, we didn't have time to thoroughly vet those responses. But it does appear that, based on a quick review of what they provided, that they're being responsive to what, you know, we requested, you know, seeking clarification on. A few things to note, obviously, the waiver where we're all talking about is still out there. It was my understanding that maybe at a previous meeting that I wasn't at, that the Board of Health was going to be present and make some kind of presentation about, you know, these issues. Again, obviously, we defer to that conversation and their recommendations, like what are they approving in town elsewhere? You know, we're not here to set the precedent for that. We would rely on them to do that. They are providing the area to do it if needed, if that's the, you know, choosing of the board. It seems like it's something they could, you know, retrofit is the right word, but there is space there to do it if that is what ends up being the ultimate decision. A few other things, we know we requested some clarifications on the water and the number of hydrants, so those kind of questions are still out there. What comfortable, how comfortable the fire department is. But there's only one hydrant in the whole loop. So if maybe there should be, again, you know, if they feel that's sufficient, great. If not, we'd want to see some more added. Again, the snow, a lot of the snow is being pushed into that center area, again, over the septic system. But there is no restriction on doing that, which is kind of best practice. It seems like there could be a better way to handle that and not put, you know, when you have a system that's designed to infiltrate water and you're putting concentrated snowmelt on top of it, it's just going to hamper that ability to do so. So we'd like to maybe see an adjustment there. They have proposed to add the crosswalk out at the intersection to cross the road, because the sidewalks on the other side from this development. But they'll need to coordinate with DPW and town staff on that. But they are willing to do so. And then some questions about, like, the landscaping, so it doesn't seem to be, you know, the illustrative thing that was presented, that we haven't seen any landscape or anything like that, other than the renderings. So there's no landscape plan or anything like that yet. And same with lighting. With the proximity of some of the residential abutters, we just want to make sure that any lights or anything that are proposed are staying on the property and not casting over property lines. For the most part, again, just based on what they've said, they've addressed the stormwater comments. We're obviously going to need some time to confirm that. But it seems like they've at least attempted to do so. So that's where we stand, but I'm obviously here to answer any questions if you have any at this point.
Great, thank you. Can we start with you, Mark?
You don't have any, this is a shared system. You don't have any estimates on what a D-Nite system's going to cost?
No. Not off the top of my head, no. I wouldn't be comfortable doing that.
Scott, highly likely that it's going to.
Be required.
Be required in the, you know. Seven years goes by quick.
Right. No, it's certainly a concern. When we said that we didn't take necessarily an exception to the waiver, because it's strictly from an engineering standpoint, if you're willing to give them that waiver, there's no reason you can't. It's not like we don't have any hesitation about you doing so. Obviously, if you have hesitation about doing so, you should not. But like from a, you know, again, relying on the Board of Health's input, if they're okay with it, like with them starting with a traditional Title V and if it needs to be retrofitted at a later date or if the Board of Health's going to want to see that system right up front, then that's what should happen.
That's all I have at the moment. I'm just concerned that the money's going to be there to pay for it. You know, when and if the time comes. And I'm, as I said, I'm concerned about potential costs going on affordable units, which I guess can't happen because it's, the rents are by formula.
Sure.
Scott, what do you have?
Sam, you heard the comments. So could you run the analysis of what you think the nitrogen load would be for the 40 units on an annualized basis? The developer's going to give us their number. We just, again, just to kind of keep that ball rolling. And one of the other waivers, because basically all the trees on the property will be cleared, we definitely want to make sure that we have a robust landscape plan and especially to protect the abutters. So I want to make sure that, again, with the developer, hopefully, we can make sure not only the rendition here is adhered to, but we'd like to make sure that this is much protection for the abutters if we're going to potentially allow the waiver to have, in theory, almost every tree cleared on the lot. Thank you.
Yep, perfect.
Frank?
Well, the members of the people who lived in the neighborhood have been testifying before us the last couple of hearings. And one of the issues they consistently raise is the stormwater and runoff and so forth. And I understand this is what, you've got a response now from the applicant. He's going to further review it and then respond to us with more information. So, but I think that's something that, after listening to the concerns of the neighbors, I think is a very important issue, and we've got to really nail that down. Thank you.
Matt, can you show me where the accessible spots are? Reading my plan is so small, it's hard for me to even figure out. I see that you questioned it, that's why I wanted you to.
Oh, originally.
Dispersed from the project.
No. I mean, maybe it's changed since.
Yes, I think, I mean, looking quickly, off the top of my head, originally, they were all kind of shown in this area down here.
Right.
But now they're scattered, we just asked them, like, you know, there's one here, there's one here. They've scattered, you just, like, a little bit better distribution than having them kind of concentrated in one area. So it does appear that's been addressed.
So no lighting plan, no, like, on the abutter lighting plan?
Right, like, just where, like, you know, how, you know, I'm assuming there, I mean, typically, I guess with a development of this size, it probably won't be too many streetlights. It's probably just more like kind of lanterns out in front of each building or something, you know, wall, or something mounted to the building itself. You know, if there's obviously, there's lights on the back of the rear of these buildings, then that's where we'd be concerned about getting it over the property line. If everything's facing towards the middle, great, but we're looking, just look for some clarification on that, that's all.
Okay, well, a lot of stuff he's probably going to tend to, so I'll be most set. Jim?
No, the questions I had tonight have been asked by the Board. And I just would say that, really, this came in with us in seven days. I haven't had a chance to fully digest, so I may have future questions a bit later, but thank you.
I believe I've asked most of my questions right now.
Good, Nick? Everybody all set up here before I go to the public?
Yes.
Anybody want to speak from the public? Come on up.
Neil Gary, 77 Brick Hill. I'm the one that keeps bringing up the drainage because it's all going to end up in my yard and in my garage. I'd like to see that you're staying on top of it. And for the most part, I just want to say thank you because the effort I can see and the concern I see is very big. And that's what we like to see from, you know, we can't stop it, but our concern is there's way too much being stuffed in here and trying to address all the bad side of that. So I appreciate the effort.
Thank you. Wasn't that nice to hear?
Yes.
I appreciate that.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
This is Deana LeBlanc, 33 Sophie Lane. I was just wondering if you had received a letter? I emailed Norine a letter regarding 33 Sophie Lane, and I was hoping it would get read tonight.
Did you ask to have the letter read into the record?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, she's here, so she can tell us what it says.
That's what you told me to write. Okay.
Do you have it in your phone?
I don't have my phone because I can't keep it off.
So it would be in, it's in our file?
It's in the file?
Yep.
If you're here, just tell us what's in it.
Yeah, can you sum it up?
So, sum it up. Filing adverse possession to the land behind my property. We've been there 27 years, we have a shed on it. And I wanted to bring note to that, that our engineer won't be out there till October 29th to November 7th. I have a lawyer in place. Going forward, two of those units this company is talking about will be affected because it will have to be moved. I have a very strong case.
Where is your house? Where do you live on that plan?
33, oh my God. All right, parcel. Oh, thank you.
So there's the one that's encroaching into the wall there?
The shed, yeah.
Yeah, the shed. Where is it? I can't see. That's it, right there. So I've been maintaining that land for 27 years. The shed's been there 20 years. I qualify for all the requirements for this adverse possession. It's just that the engineer's not coming out till, in the end of October, beginning of November, to really get the markings and the lawyer will start processing that forward. I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that going forward because it will have to make adjustments to his plan because two units land right in my property. So I'm sorry, but that will all get adjusted. And I don't know what else I'm supposed to say.
No, it's good to know, I didn't know.
Yeah.
It's good to know that.
Hopefully, you and the developer can start talking.
So, thank you.
What's the property address there? Your number 33, you said?
33 Sophie Lane.
The shed's been there for 20?
20 years. And I've been maintaining the property for 27. We've been there since 1997. I meet all the qualifications. It's a, I'm sorry, but I do meet everything. We've done some research, the lawyer is very confident, and two of the units there. So all your markings on my property, all those stakes is where I want my property to be because I've been maintaining that open land for 27 years. So we'll be putting a dent in his plan. I wanted to make sure that was on the record, so I did write a letter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a laser pointer right under that shelf below? Sometimes there is.
Is this laser pointer?
Yeah, I think you can point it at the.
No, I don't think it.
The thing?
No, no, I think it's a smaller thing. I was just.
I'm not the.
Where did that come from?
I'm a nurse, I don't know these stuff.
As long as you save people, we're okay.
She can just save people.
I'm looking down, I don't see anything.
That's okay, that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
We know what you're talking about.
In fact, I'll use my finger. Well, there it is, right above that yellow spot.
Yeah.
And there is a shed, and that.
How much beyond where the shed is are you talking about?
So.
Left and right to it.
So there's five, I'm estimating 5,000 square feet. So the shed, big quarters, half the shed, so it's behind this yellow one. How do you move that yellow thing?
I don't know. You made it.
Okay. So it's going to affect, his sticks were in my yard.
Oh, there, he's got the.
Oh, where'd you find that? All right, all right, let's see. Okay, so, oh, there it is. So there, jeepers, here's a shed. That's, so he's got, like, these buildings really point into my yard from the angle from here, the stick was here, there's a stick there, and there's a stick here, and then a stick going over here. This is all going to be affected. These two properties here will be affected because.
Actually into the buildings themselves?
Yeah, because the sticks are in my yard. And I'm assuming those were landmarks for the buildings, were they? The sticks that you guys planted in my yard, are those the markers that started those buildings? Because you said.
There's lot line markers with a, we showed a lot line and then the shed. And then the rear of the buildings were staked for your walk.
Okay, so the rear of the buildings will be on the property that I'm fighting for. So these two properties here will be affected, so you won't, these units right here are, and will be in the dispute for that land location.
Is there any way you can get us a plan showing what you're claiming there? Because that's kind of important that we know what you're talking about. You have to do it. You're the person making the claim.
Yeah, so the engineering is coming out October 29th to November 7th, and all that will be, and the lawyer will be sending all that information. So I'm just giving you the forewarning that with your markers and everything is what I'm fighting for because the land has been maintained for 27 years. You go there, it's all, it's like grass with crabgrass now, there's no bushes. It took me two years to cut it all back, but I kept it open and enjoyed it. Unfortunately, now it's, these two will be, are in the stakes or the end of these buildings will be on that property I'm fighting for.
Well, I think we need to see what you're claiming.
Do I take pictures and show you?
No, no, not pictures.
No, when your engineer does the plan, bring it in.
Oh, yeah, I'll bring it in when it happens. Well, whenever he gives it to me, when they come, October 29th to November 7th, and get everything done, oh, believe me, you'll be the first, I'll drop it off.
Well, tell them to get right on it.
All right, and I will. Try to ask them to come early, but they said they can't.
I'm wondering if Mr. Geary, who spoke earlier, can show us on that plan where your property is.
Well, I'm not even, I'm down the bottom.
Bottom right-hand corner. Bottom right-hand corner.
You would have, you would have picked this up.
On the bottom left.
Yeah, it is, right here where they cut, and if you look at the drainage plan, all the drainage runs down, they have a, a dry well setup being dug in right here.
Right.
And the bottom of the dry well is actually equal to the middle of my backyard in elevation. And right now, on a heavy rain, my backyard floods. And I looked at their elevation of their drainage swale and the bottom of the excavation for the drainage is the equivalent of the middle of my backyard. And it's right next to my garage, which is probably right about here.
What is your property address?
77 Brick Hill.
77 Brick Hill.
No, leave it alone. I can roll, I, I can roll a mouse. But this, this property here is, we're talking the drainage swale is going here, in this corner of the lot. And as far as I reading the elevations, the elevation at the bottom of this drainage area is pretty much the equivalent of the middle of my backyard.
So you contend...
And I have a garage, as you commented, very large garage, right here, previously, just recently built four years ago. And right now, we don't have an appreciable drainage off of that lot because it's all woodland and it pretty much absorbs most of it. But between what comes out of the front of the buildings here, comes down the roadway and just overall, because we're the lowest spot on the road.
So your contention is that...
It's just going to...
That swale is going to weep on your property?
It's going to, it's going to put all that three and a half acres of water right adjacent to my property at the same level. And like you say, in a heavy rain, we have a pond for about half a day every time it heavy rain. And that, and the pond basically sits on my leach field, so that's just another fun aspect of it is that when we do pond up on a heavy rain, whether it's running down the road and coming in the driveway or in the lower half of the yard, which is a low spot anyway, the backyard floods. So the last thing I need is another four acres of drainage running in next to the garage.
Okay. Madam, can I ask him a question?
Ask him.
So, I want to make sure I understand this. When, are you saying that when that drainage area holding pond fills, that it will overflow and go into your property?
Doesn't have to overflow, the, if I looked at the side elevation of that drainage swale there, the bottom of the drainage swale is at the same elevation as the middle of my backyard.
It goes in the low...
So it's just going to weep sideways. It's not saying it's going to up and overflow the top, it's just going to...
It's going to saturate and go through.
And it's going to perk up. And add to, and add to the already problem that I have being the low spot in the road.
I'd love to hear what, I, I appreciate that, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
No, but I would ask that our peer perhaps review what's been discussed tonight.
Pleasure here, Matt, for this.
Anybody else, come on up. Name an address, please.
My name's Deborah McDonald and I live at 15 Sophie Lane. And I am on the map, I would be at the top left corner if you were back in the other. Yeah, I would be top left, further over the... Further? Yep. You'd be within boxes at the top left. Right here. Up, yeah, right there. Right into your property if they showed up. Thanks, she's my neighbor, so.
She knows where you live.
Thank you, Jen. Um, yeah, so this whole thing started because of a whole bunch of lies that were told. I was told that this land that my dad gave someone a loan to buy, that it was already, um, divided into one acre lots by the, at the registry of deeds in Barnstable. And I was told by the builder that I would have a 20 to 30 foot buffer in the back of my property. Come to find out, the 97 Brick Hillen house was sold and the builder, his attorney supposedly didn't, I'm not saying he's lying, but he didn't check the registry of deeds. I think that's a big mistake by an attorney that's doing a land sale. So apparently then they were putting a fence up, the new neighbors, and they were told, you own all this land too, behind me. So, and this is directly impacting, now, now we have this development because of this lie. Because we were all told the same thing, everyone in the community was told. It was deeded into one acre lots, you were going to put one home on one acre, you were going to have a buffer. I end up, now my house looks like a prison. The land was built, my yard flooded, now I have a retaining wall that is hideously ugly and only part of it's capped. And I have an easement that was blocked off by a retaining block that is not, we don't have an association. When I bought my home in 2004, on my deed, there is no association, it's supposed to be on your deed. I know, I owned a condo years ago and wall him, I'm, I'm aware of an association. Fast forward, now, I've been down to the town, I don't many, don't know how many times. All, everything is, it's a civil matter, it's a civil matter, it's a civil matter. Falmouth has no bylaws to protect anyone that actually owns a home. You don't have a friendly fence bylaw. Every other town, most other towns have six to eight inches off the line, so that way you don't have to trespass when you want to go on and maintain your item. But no, we don't have that. So my yard's ripped up, it's tanning block, it's just a nightmare. So now, fast forward, now we get this put in because guess what? Because now that there really isn't an acre for each lot and we're, really never were getting the four houses in the street, now, they're going to sell it off to the highest bidder, is what I predicted, and here we are with a circus behind us. It looks like a monstrosity. The fact that they do not care about the nitrogen levels and they're actually acting cocky about it right now, as though that's too much information, people shouldn't care about their health and what they're drinking. We already have a problem. How many years have you gotten lead in your water or it's been contaminated? And how many problems have we had with our septic systems? And this gentleman is going to have the same problem I had. Water's going to flood right onto his leaching field and the fact that they're going to push the snow onto a leaching field and onto the septic, completely ridiculous. Also, I take offense to the fact that they think they're going to use all these sheds and whatnot as a service center for the 80 properties. This isn't a stop and shop. How much noise pollution are we going to have? We already got a 40B put in in Jamie Lane next to it. You got Brick Hillen place, nobody really wanted it, but yeah, it went through, they ripped every tree out. People have no privacy, they didn't leave any trees, they built the decks on the back of the homes right up to their backyards. It's loud, there were kids running around for a while, smashing bottles in the streets, doing all kinds of nonsense, but whatever, it's calmed down, it's fine. But that's only 15 units. You're talking 40 units in four acres. Edgar Town is going to build the same type of, of a place, but much nicer. On eight and a half acres, they're doing a 40 unit, 40B. 300 committees buying 48 acres of land in North Falmouth. And then they're also buying, I believe, 14 acres to put, or maybe it's eight and a half, to put 14 homes for first-time home buyers. I think that sounds like a better idea, why don't we make some homes for first-time home buyers so people can actually afford to buy a home? But let's scale this down. This is outrageous. It looks like those one, two-floor slabs with one room, they're, they're hideous. I mean, isn't there a quality of life that people should have just because they don't have as much money? Shouldn't they have nicer options? And don't the people that live in the town, in the area, if you walk through the neighborhood right now, you can hear a pin drop. It's a beautiful neighborhood, it's not a cut-through, all the roads are winding around, it's quiet, almost everyone in the neighborhood lives there. Since I moved there in 2004, I bought the home because I loved that it was very residential and it wasn't very touristy. Fast forward to now, regret. I don't want to regret that I sunk everything I had into my home only to have it sold out like we don't mean anything. Like our, our opinion doesn't matter. You already put one in next to us, do something else. Scale it down to 20, make it look good, don't put a million, I mean, really, are people going to live in storage units who can go, go down the street and buy one? I mean, it's just, I am disgusted, I think it's wrong, I think the traffic is going to be horrendous. If you have 40 units, that's 40 cars just for one person, if everyone has a car, never mind, how many people are living in the three bedrooms? How many people are living in the two bedrooms? How many people are having company? Where is all this overflow going to be? And how much noise do we have to listen to? I, my yard is destroyed, every tree's pretty much gone, I look out into a prison, now I have to figure out what I'm going to do. My water easement is blocked, it's not even mine. The town says they won't do anything about it. But when it, when the development was built in 1973, it was put in there, the water was supposed to flow through and now feel like not a problem. Well, whose problem is it? Doesn't the town work for us? Don't we pay taxes to be heard? Don't we matter? The town was supposed to buy up land to put affordable housing in it, now it's like just anybody, these developers get in there and they're like, yeah, we can make mad money, let's just go. Let's just dump the land, yep, who cares? I don't live here. Guess what? We care, we all care and we don't like what's happening. And that is the end of it and it's going to ruin our neighborhood and it's not fair. And I, I really don't know, I mean, they should have a noise pollution study, they should have a traffic study, they're going to put a crosswalk on Brick Hillen Road, a huge, huge, busy, busy, busy road. It's going to put everything to a halt. I just, I feel like it's not okay. And I'm totally against it. I think it's unreasonable. I think you're asking the unacceptable. And I think that the people should be listened to. And I also think the septic and everything else is a big concern and we don't need people living, it's like a small city in a tiny area, you know? And the fact that the landscaping is just on there for looks and isn't it really included? Everything should be included, should have all the architectural plans already, everything should be in there, the way it's going to be, these are the plantings, this is the cost, this is the study, this is what we need to do, let's take out some of those storage areas, it's not a construction zone.
Thank you.
And I don't know what else to say. Thank you.
Very much. Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Luke Barmakian, 97 Brick Hillen Road. I'd like to address the dumpster situation at this project. How do you move this?
You gotta scroll down. One more.
Right now, the dumpster is right here, correct?
Yep.
Why can't that dumpster be moved over here? Is there a reason?
Come on up, Nick, and, well, well, why don't you say your questions and then we'll, I mean, ask your questions and then we'll let him respond, okay?
This whole area is a wildlife habitat and there are going to be children living here, Coyotes constantly cross the road from the old drive-in into these woods. I've seen them in our yard, 97 Brick Hillen Road, during the day, the afternoon, night, early morning. These coyotes and, and animals that live in this habitat are brazen. I would think it would be dangerous to keep a dumpster so close to the drive-in and at least here, next to this garage, they wouldn't be walking all the way through this development to get to the dumpster, which they are going to go to that dumpster. My question is, why isn't this dumpster in a more, I don't know, concealed area, I would say? That would make more sense.
Do you have other concerns?
No, that's it.
Nick, you want to come up and just answer that one quick? This is a good question.
We, we think that the dumpster makes sense there because people would dispose of their trash on their way out. It cut down on the traffic, we need, it just makes it easier, we need recycle also, they can get their mail at the same time, they can put mail to go out at the same time. So it just, to us, it made sense to put it there.
Well, couldn't they still drive their car over to this dumpster, or this area? It is a circle. And it would seem to me that if the dumpster truck comes all the way around, it would be a straight shot right into this area to pick up the dumpster. Now, he's going to have to make a three-point turn to pick up the dumpster.
That's true. Mac, you're going to have to look at that three-point turn, too. Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the public? Anybody else have any further questions up here?
Well, I think we're at the point where we need answers.
We do need answers.
Can I address some of the things?
Go for it, Nick.
So, first of all, typically, you'll see with Acapescu, we do the landscape plan after we've had a chance to hear all the buffering concerns that have to go on. So rather than doing multiple landscape plans, we meet with the buddies, we hear the board's comments, we develop the landscape plan, taking all that into consideration. So there will be a landscape plan submitted. Lighting plan, typically, that's handled through a condition in the comp permit that just says, all lighting has to remain on the property, Doc Sky friendly, compliant.
What about a photometric?
A photometric plan, you didn't even require one of those for Saxon, it was just a condition in the plan and they have a lot more lighting than we do. So, and higher buildings.
Yeah.
Always been handled by...
We had one for Saxon.
There was a condition in their comp permit, I saw it in there.
Oh, I thought we had one too, did we? I thought we did.
I don't think so.
We reviewed.
But that's the way we've always handled it in the past, where you put a condition in, all lighting has to be Doc Sky compliant.
Right.
Can't leave the site. All right, so that's the way we were approaching it. Back to the most recent concern that come up about the fence and cutting off the drainage, that had nothing to do with us, that's not our property, should not have been added to this. So I could, there's nothing I could do about that. The dumpster location, I still maintain that's the best spot for it, I hope you'll agree with that and...
What about considering taking those dorm buildings out and building duplexes so that it looks halfway decent?
Well, that would, that would cut the number of units down to a point where the project would be, I'm sorry, that would cut the number of units down to where, it, it would, first of all, it would eliminate the studios, which is one thing that other people in the town are very happy about, including people that can only afford studios. And I think the buildings are, are fit in there nicely, they're not much bigger than a big colonial. You know, when you look at the 36 feet deep...
My house is a colonial, it's not 100 feet.
They may not be the house itself, but you've got a 42-foot colonial with a 24-foot garage, you're 66 feet. Many people do. What I'm saying is, I think the buildings fit in nicely, I think they'll be landscaped nicely, you don't even see them from Brick Hillen Road. When they're up, you won't see them from Brick Hillen Road, you'll be driving in the project to see them. And, and there's a need, we're filling a need that's really there, there's no one building studio apartments that, it fills a need.
Okay, anybody have any question?
I have a couple of quick questions. One is, I'll make, may I ask the, the Arizona administrator, I don't want this one to slip away as zero Acapescu has kind of slipped away on us a little bit. How many more days or weeks left in the 180-day looksee at this thing?
The date is listed on the front of the folder.
Because I can, I can see many questions that's still to be answered.
Drop dead?
It was drop dead.
It should say 180 days.
January 7th.
So, January 7th is our 180 days. And I just want to make sure that we have an opportunity to get everything in, there's no delay that we get the right questions. There's no delay that we get the right questions. The question's answered, we get the questions out there. I believe that, Madam Chair, that our peer engineer is going to come up and answer a few questions for us after Mr. Mariani gets off the podium. Are you going to have him do that?
You can, yeah.
Well, I think, I think, I think we should. But I just want to make sure that we get everything answered. And I don't, one of the things that really bothers me with these 40Bs is that we, I know that as we ask questions and the applicant then responds to those questions, we might get new plans. But they come in dribs and drabs. They come in at last minute. Doesn't give us enough time to look at it, evaluate it. And I'd like to just make sure these things happen a lot faster than they are. I'm not sure how he's going to do it, but it's too slow at this point in time.
It took a month to do the peer review.
And it's going to slip away from us. The next thing we're going to know is we're going to have to close this thing as Mr. Mariani is asking us to do the next one. And we will not have answered the questions necessary for this community to make a valid decision. So, thank you. And I look forward to our engineer maybe coming up in there and answer some questions.
Okay, the last thing I wanted to address was the drainage issue. Our engineer, our engineer who designed this can't be here tonight. He's, he's on vacation. But he'll be here for the next meeting. I believe that this system will, I believe from what he's told me, that this system will make the problem on this lot out on Brick Hill Road for Gary's better. Because we're going to intercept the water that's running that way and it's going to drain leach into here. So it comes into that basin and leaches into that leaching field for the drainage. So I'll let him answer that. I'm not an engineer. But I believe that's the intent of this whole thing, not to have water running out on the neighbor's property. We know we can't do that. The stormwater standards have to be met between our engineer and the peer review engineer. So it'll be worked out.
Would it be possible for your engineer to meet with your butler on the site? To kind of walk through it?
Well, I think, I don't know. I don't know. I mean, it's possible. Certainly can talk to, you can present it at the next meeting. And if he wants to do that, if that's deemed appropriate, we can put them in contact with them, sure. We don't have a problem. We're not trying to make anybody's situation worse. We're trying to build a project.
We, we heard concerns expressed with piling the snow on top of that leach field. And now you're telling us on top of that, this containment basin is going to leach into there as well? That seems to be adding more of an issue. I mean, if he was concerned with the snow, I mean, aren't you also concerned with the, you contend that this containment is going to leach into that leach field?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, and we were just told that there's a concern about putting snow on top.
No, he's talking about the septic leach field he was talking about, which is up-
Oh.
In the middle.
Up here. But, I mean, it rains on those leach fields and snow sits there and melts into them. I don't see a problem with putting snow on the ends of them. It's, but anyway, that's, it's not prohibited by the Board of Health.
We can ask, we can ask the engineer those questions. He's here. I feel him, anyway.
There's a question that'll be asked.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a concern, obviously.
Can you tell us how, what the distance is between the two large studio buildings?
Sure, I can. 10 feet.
So it's 10 feet in between those outside stairs?
Yeah, 10 feet, yes.
Any other questions for Nick before Matt comes back up? You guys are all set? I think there's a few more questions for you. Please. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. The, the concern we heard from Mr. Gary is that this water retention basin will shed, potentially shed water onto his property via means of seeping through the land, if I'm correct. Now, I'm pretty sure we all know you're not supposed to shed water into someone else's property. So the question for, for you is, is engineer, what evaluation does the applicant have to make to assure Mr. Gary that his land is not going to be impacted by this basin?
Well, just to clarify, the water can't shed at the surface. It can't just like be pouring, like just like, like a river running across the property line. Per the stormwater standards, they're tasked to put the water back in the ground. If the groundwater is already high, then the groundwater is high. But I mean, there's, but there's separation requirements and different things. So, and like I said, like most, again, we're going to evaluate it further, but this, the water that goes here is being pushed this way into this system, away from the property line. This is just like an initial kind of catch, to catch it. And then there's pipe, there's pipe connections that go across. And then this is essentially a system that'll be under the road and will be on the road. But that, this is where, this ultimately where the stormwater is going. This initial basin is just a kind of a first step.
So the butler's concern, you should not be concerned about?
I can't say that. I mean, we're going to look at it, but, yeah, but, but, I mean, again, the water is going, the intent is for the water to go this way. Not, you know, it's not going towards the property line. And especially at the surface. I mean, they're capturing it and putting it in the ground, which is what they're tasked to do.
I just want to make sure that the butler's concerns have been addressed properly. And he's not affected negatively by the whole thing. Let me ask one more question, too. With regard to a photometric plan or dark sky compliant, which includes elimination of light trespass, do we, to the butlers, do we have enough information to understand that there is no light trespass? Or we have dark sky compliant lighting?
Right now, I don't believe there's any information on the lights. Or like, just even where they're located.
What should we be asking the applicant to give us so that we are, we know how to condition this?
Yeah, I guess just, just, I mean, again, it could be a condition, that all the lights need to be dark sky compliant and then be no trespass over the property line.
So we don't need to evaluate a photometric plan?
Not necessarily. Because I guess, I mean, I assume they're not going to have typical streetlights that are, you know, 20 feet off the ground for a development of this size. Yeah, but, but, I mean, but like, that's the clarification we're seeking. Like, what, what is the plan? Like, what are you going to do?
So, not going after you.
Yeah, but understood, yeah, I understand your question, but yeah.
What do we need to ask the applicant to do to show this board that there's not going to be light trespass and that it will be dark sky compliant? Because we can condition something dark sky compliant, but who's, in the end, who evaluates dark sky compliant?
It would be, I mean, it would be like the building department, I think, at the time. Like when the building, you know, like as part of the-
That's after the fact without a plan to evaluate. Do you think?
Yes.
The building department has to look at a plan and say, "Look."
But these, but also, these are only permitting plans. When they go to the building department, there probably will be more detail.
But we don't know how to condition this other than saying dark sky compliant?
And no trespass, and no trespass over the property line.
So we don't have to evaluate anything? To make my choice, we don't need it. It doesn't matter.
No, I, I wouldn't think so. Not, not if you have that condition.
No light to travel over the property line.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the folks, if this is approved, that they are not hurt by that.
Yeah, I mean, if you certainly, I mean, you can request it or request clarification of which, what are they planning to do? Like, are there going to be streetlights? Are the lights just going to be building mounted? Are they like, you know, that, that's kind of what we're looking for? But if they don't, but if they don't provide that, then having the condition, I would think, would cover your concerns.
Well, I mean, just to say one last thing, Madam Chair. I mean, this board has to make an evaluation. It can condition anything it wants, whether or not the applicant then runs to heck with it and say, "I can't do this." That puts us in a bad position because we're not sure why we conditioned it other than say, "Don't do this." But he can claim that it's too expensive to do. It's a different composition that we're in by not being able to evaluate than have you evaluate what he's going to do.
Understood, but I think typically, the, I mean, the trend is for less light than more light. And putting in a bunch of lights that are going to cause trespass would be cost prohibitive. He's going to put in less lights. So I guess we wouldn't have that concern.
I don't know that. I don't-
Agreed, but, I mean, that's typically, you know, he's not just going to put a streetlight in front of every house to, like, because it just wouldn't make any sense.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Anybody else have any questions?
Just point of clarification for the butler. Retention pond, whatever we want to call this area, that, that can handle the potential 100-year storm. The volume that, when you look at that, is that's what's going to be dispersed back underneath.
Yes, I believe so. I mean, we'll, we'll confirm that, but yes. That, I mean, that's typically our criteria. You know, is this thing going to handle the 100-year storm event without it being, you know, having, you know, the systems have overflows, et cetera. Like, it should all be contained. And then anything beyond that is obviously, will be bigger problems than-
Yeah, just, I'd like to confirm that. So the butler understands.
That is certainly something we will double check.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? We're all set to wrap it up?
Can I ask the other question afterwards?
You can ask one now, quick. Yep.
What were you talking about? Chris, anal block again. You're talking about the light pollution. Brick Hill Place went through the approval process. So my neighbor across the street, she's got a bright light in her backyard that shines into her property, on that property. So it went through and it affects her every night. And she's gone down the town, so you want to make sure this light pollution doesn't happen because it happened on Brick Hill Place. And it's right there in her backyard. And I see it in my house. But it's not my backyard. It's across the way. So with that being said, it does happen. There should be some kind of, definitely verbiage locations to prevent that from happening. Because that was just a recent build in the last two, three years. I lose track of time. But also, there are 20 units. And 20 units would be better than 40. And we know you're building, you're keeping, you know, you're saying it's for the community, but we know there's profit. Everybody builds for profit. So 40 units brings in more money. So on Brick Hill Place, their rent's gone up $100 every year. And it keeps going up. So profit, or is it really for the community? If it's truly for the community, then maybe you need to consider downsizing this project. If it's strictly for profit, is what I see. And the rents will go up. And that's what, there's a, somebody knows somebody that lives in Brick Hill Place and they've been there three years and the- Three years for three years, Robin? Every $100? Since it opened. It's gone up $100 every year. So inflation, you, you know, it's, it's a state project. Who's, who's making the money here? It's by profit. So light pollution is definitely a serious thing.
We'll keep an eye on it for conditions.
Chris, we, I have to address that last comment, just, just so you know. Brick Hill Place was approved five or six years ago. The conditions put on that project were minimal. It went through pretty fast. I think it was one or two meetings. The, the, because of that, the costs were so low that the rent, all those units are affordable. So the rent at that time could have been $1,575. We went on the market at $1,350. The next year, we went up to $1,450. The next year, to $1,550. The rents right now for two-bedroom units could be $1,774. We went to $1,750 this year. So we're still below what we could have been because we didn't get hit with all those conditions that, that basically made the cost unaffordable. So we were able to keep the rents lower because we're limited in how much we can make. So that's, if, if the costs are down, we can keep our, our rents down. We have to keep them down.
Thank you. All right, Noreen, what do we have for a date on this?
Continuing to November 14.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we continue to November 14.
A second. Do we have a motion in a second? Other discussion?
Is that okay with everybody's engineers?
Is that okay with you, Matt? And your engineer? It's November 14th. Nick? The engineer can be here on the 14th? Okay. All set, everybody?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
Okay, November 14th, guys, 6 o'clock. Hopefully, there won't be people in the room. All right, let's clean up our area here. Oh, boy, oh, boy. All right, let's see. All right, we have Acapescot Gardens. Can you introduce yourselves, sir?
Nick Mariani for a different applicant.
All right. So, as a result of all the meetings we did have with those neighbors who took us up on the offer to talk to them about buffering and areas of impact, you can see where we've added a bunch of fencing behind all the units, along with evergreen trees. And the result of that is a final landscape plan that spells out species and caliper, size of plants, and number of plants. So this is a final landscape plan for this project. And that's exactly what will happen on future projects is as we develop, we move along and figure out where we need to buffer and things that have to be done, we develop the landscape plan and submit it one time. Other than that, I think, I think we've addressed all the engineering concerns. And I think we've addressed board's concerns. If there are any questions or anything unaddressed, I'd be happy to answer it.
Did you get the block signed properly?
Well, that's on the 81X plan, I believe. And we've, that's a plan we have to do as part of the final approval, but it's not for this.
Not for this one.
We showed the preliminary plan on it. Showed where, where the, the, so we submitted a draft 81X plan, which shows that these two lots emerged right here. Now, because this is land court, this takes a little time and costs a lot of money to do. So we just wanted to wait till we had the approval before we actually had to do it. There are many other things we have to do for final approval, including a lottery plan and a marketing plan and other things.
Now, I have three waivers in front of me. I have an August 14th and then two that are not dated. But I think the two that are not dated, they're just in different fonts.
Should be six, six waiver requests. Six waivers requested.
See, these two only have three.
Yeah, it's the one with six.
The one with six. Mine's dated October, I mean, August 14th. And that's the landscape plan that's, that's with it?
That was submitted at the same time, yes.
Yeah, okay. These are dead. Okay, does anybody have any questions? We'll start on this end. Tony, you have any questions on Acapescot?
Chairman, may I ask the question? What is the 180 days on this, on this project?
11/12?
So we're, we're there just about. Yes. I want to be consistent in my questioning with you on these 40Bs. I am, as one board member, very unsatisfied with the way you have responded to us with regard to the nitrogen load and these nitrogen sets in the area. I don't feel confident, particularly with the lot. But this one does have, I think, a water, a sewer system coming down Acapescot for a date that we don't know. It's not certain. We have no idea. You're putting in a loop sewer line, I believe that's what was replied, that at some point in time, we'll be ready to hook up to the town sewer line. And this is a sewer line that you can't hook up to. Am I correct?
That's what we're told. That's, I mean, there's no guarantees, but we've been told that we would be able to connect to it.
So we are, as a board, or at least this one board member, have to ask again, why, here, here we are at the end, on the 180 days. Why should, because this is what you've asked for, why should we waive the coastal water ability district bylaw? Just because someday, there might be, maybe, who knows when, a sewer line that maybe you can hook up to. In the meantime, years go by and this project then adds- In the meantime, years go by, and this project then adds a lot of nitrogen, never given us any nitrogen load information. So I'm not sure, this board, other than the fact that it's a 40B, could make a complete invalid decision on this project. So my concern is that we don't know what the nitrogen load will be. Is it harmful to this community? When the sewer line will go down Acapescot? If it'll go down Acapescot? My question is, how do we make a decision, other than the fact that it's 40B, and if we don't, you'll go to hack? How do we make this decision without knowing these things? You've asked for the waiver. It's not an automatic waiver. I just want it on the record. I want to know how we do that, other than be scared to death that it'll go to hack.
I don't think you'd be scared to death. I'm just asking you to follow the statute. The statute basically says that if you can't impose a condition, a local condition, that's going to make the project uneconomic. That doesn't mean we don't want to cooperate and we're not concerned. We know that this is going to cost a lot of money. There's been a couple of other 40Bs we've done recently in Falmouth, where you did send out for a peer review study on it, and they came back and said, a lot of money. Make it cost prohibitive. You can't impose the condition. One of them actually said that to you, one of the consultants you, I can get you a copy of the letter.
Yes. This one board member here has no idea what that additional cost will be to you for these 12 units, that are now going to be homeownership, that you haven't agreed to make, to put aside a escrow balance to at least be affordable for units. You really can't condition it that way, I suspect. But we've not asked you to. And I guess I have to ask the question, since it's going homeownership versus rental, you switched that over. This can become, because we don't know when the sewer line's going to go in, and I know that I'm really administrative, will, will smack me in the head if I go too far here. But the cost, as you've pointed out, for an IA system, is very expensive, and you say it's prohibitive. I don't know what it's cost because you never told us that. But can you imagine what it's going to be for one of the affordable units if all of a sudden, they have to be forced to put it in, and there's no money for them to go into? Now, you suggested that you might go to the Falmouth Housing, what is it, what is it, trust?
Go with the Affordable Housing Fund.
But here we are, you're going to ask us to close, as you did last time here. And yet, we don't have the information we need to fully evaluate how to condition this part of it, the rest of it, yes, but this part of it. So I'm not sure that we should waive it now, just because you've told us that it's cost prohibitive. We can't evaluate that. So I'm just asking for the answer so that this board hears, it's on the record, what your answer will be.
You've heard my answer on the record already.
Yes, cost prohibitive.
Cost prohibitive, yes. It, it raises the cost to a point where we believe mass housing will say it's not economic. And their economic threshold, I believe, is 15% profit. If we can't demonstrate that the project can make 15% on a for-sale project, they wouldn't have given us a project eligibility letter. So if we put a cost onto it that's going to lower it beyond that, then, you know, we, and we end up at hack, they'll, they'll probably deny the condition.
Can we get?
Why do we have to go that route? I mean, I don't understand the battle over this. This is...
Is that a way of getting you to agree to put up some amount of escrow for the affordable units so when it comes time?
To what? To pay for them to?
For IA systems in the event that the sewer line doesn't go down. We don't know it's going to go down.
Why is that our responsibility?
Because you are affecting the Coast to Ponderley District. There is a direct effect, negative effect, to our Coast to Ponderley District, which you've not demonstrated to this board yet, whether it's a negative or positive. And I'm concerned by this, one board member's concerned about that.
Okay, all right, and I understand this. So let's fast forward. They do hook up to sewer in four years.
Yes.
And the sound hits those same people with a Betterment charge of $30,000 for their, am I supposed to pay that too? How are you going to deal with that?
No, my, my question, I agree with you. But I can only address what is in front of me today, is you're requesting a comprehensive permit and includes working in the Overley District, and the effect that you, your apartment will have that Overley District, and what negative effects it might have on the affordable housing. I think you're putting affordable housing in for many reasons, but I think you're doing it to provide affordable housing. And is it fair to those people to have to potentially pay for this without some provision to help them?
I'm not sure the provision you're suggesting.
You said yourself that it's a $30,000 to, for Betterment. How are the affordable humans that are living in those dwellings going to cop up $30,000?
No, they're not. Con expense.
It's a con expense.
Con.
How are the, still, how are the?
No, no. Wait a minute. What I'm saying is, if we, if we have to go and spend $150,000 for a IA system, and in five years from now, we're forced to connect the sewer, who's paying the $30,000 Betterment charge that the town's, the town's going to charge for each unit to connect to the sewer? That's what I was asking.
The town will amortize that.
Pardon me?
The town can amortize that.
Amortize it, but they still have to pay it. That's the point.
The Betterment on Mare Vista was like 16.
How much?
I think it was like 16.
Well, maybe because of the density on Acapescot, it'll be lower. But the point, the, the point is, somebody's got to pay that, and it's a homeowner's responsibility.
You're expecting affordable homeowners, the affordable owner units, to cop up quite a bit of cash.
We're, we're in kind of a gray area because the, there is, a lot of these things haven't been laid out yet, but there is talk that if you do install an IA, you won't be forced...
No, I'm talking about sewer.
Yeah, no, you won't be forced to hitch up to the sewer.
Oh, okay.
So that, you know, you won't be paying twice.
Oh, okay.
And I, I, you know, I understand everyone's concern, and it's my concern, especially on, on Brick Hill Road and what it does. But the town is searing east, and it's, it's going to happen. And I mean, it's the next one after whatever, the perch, T-ticket path, Birch Pond, to clear that, then the next one is going to be there. And, and, you know, out to Acoy Bay, that's, that's the plan.
Do you have to disclose to these affordable dwelling units when the humans purchase the dwelling units? So this is purchased now. Do you have to disclose to them that there may, there may be a Betterment charge coming their way?
I don't know if we have to disclose that to them. I think we have to disclose the other, we've been disclosing up at Wild Harbor, the condition that the DEP imposed about the seven years. We've just been letting people, making them aware of that.
I did have, Chairman? So the health agent was before us, if you recall him, talking about there may be instances where Title V, a standard Title V would be appropriate in areas that are planning to be sewered. I believe I thought I had asked if we could get, began to weigh in, if this was such a project, given that they were contemplating stubs to be ready to go that could hook up. I'm very much concerned about the nitrogen loading. I mean, everybody else on the board is, but I want a clarification because this might be one of those situations where allowing someone to put in a standard Title V, knowing that the sewer is coming at some point, would be inappropriate to give that particular waiver, only because we know eventually the sewer is coming, rather than forcing someone to put in the D9 system. If it's a situation where, no, sewer's not going to be there for 10 or 15 years, then I think it would be, acquiring the IA system at that point would be more in keeping of what this town needs to do to lower its total nitrogen load. But, so I, did we ever get an input or follow-up input from the health agent about if he, there might be situations?
Oh, you missed the health agent coming by at the last meeting.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was sick.
And then we do have...
Looking after everyone else's health.
Right, right, absolutely.
And he appropriately titled it "The Land of Confusion."
So I guess that was my question, if, you know, or if the board has appetite, I mean, I, Mr. Finer's right, I think it's definitely coming at some point. Question is, when? And do we want to then, the testimony is that it's not going to be, it's just going to be, it's cost prohibitive. We can insist on the financials at that point, and if so, then he can go to hack. Or do we want to perhaps look at this from, is this is a situation where we know it's coming, given standard Title V?
Personally, with what I know about it, I don't think this is the hill to fight this one on.
I agree.
I, you know, it, it's, it's coming.
I just worry about disclosing.
He's going to put in the, he's going to put the stubs in to make the hookup, you know, for us. Or it would actually be, imagine that would be cheaper than for the...
Yeah, so there's going to be just strictly a Betterment, and the cost to hitch up is going to be almost nothing, which is good because some people spent as much hitching up as they did on the Betterment.
Right. Very simple hookup. And as somebody mentioned here, the Betterment, when it is assessed, can be apportioned over a 20-year period, and that can be collected as part of the common expense of the condominium.
Well, they can do a payment.
Yes. So I don't see anybody getting whacked a huge amount of money here.
That's what I was considering.
They're going to pay, they're going to pay for it, but it can be apportioned over 20 years.
Okay.
And they're going to pay for it in their, in their water bill, because their water bill's going to be doubled, what everyone else pays.
If, I appreciate everything that all board members have contributed to this. I'm so going, and I believe I'm a voting member on this one? All we need is a...
Negative.
I, I thought I was a voting member.
Is everyone up here voting?
I am voting.
I know. I'm not on this one.
Oh, Scott's not on.
Scott's not on.
He is, sorry.
And, and I realize we, we just need a simple majority on 40Bs. But I'm, I'm just, my vote may not matter, but I am uncomfortable with not knowing when a sewer line is going to go in, or if this town can ever afford it. Although I would agree with you, this is, if we knew when the sewer line was going to go in, this is not the hill to die on. But we don't know that, and it makes me very uncomfortable.
Remember, there's two votes here. You vote to grant the permit, and then you vote each condition individually. So you, that's when we did vote on, on your issue, on whether or not to grant the waiver.
I understand, thank you.
I think, I mean, Scott came and gave us a great presentation. But that was a broad, an overview. I, I think we could get him to comment on this project in particular, and it would probably make you more comfortable, because there is...
I don't think the town needs more damage towards our Coast to Ponderley District. That's all. So I, I appreciate everything that's been said, and I, and I thank everybody for that input.
If you vote tonight, it's all... Make sure that we're requesting additional input from the health agent.
Oh, yeah. That's where there's no window for...
Not closing, I guess.
Yes, so I guess, you know, that's one of the considerations for the board. So technically, you have a 180-day limit coming up on November 12. That being said, you do have a circumstance where the applicant made a substantial change to their proposal.
And he did.
So, you know, we did not re-advertise and that type of thing, based on the change. So, but we would need to ask them for a small waiver extension of time if we were to continue the hearing.
Is there anything, do we have fire in here too? Have you done the fire?
Yes.
Yeah, they just submitted it.
Okay. I didn't look at it this week. All right, so the flavor of the board is, we're going to get something from health. That's what I'm...
We'll get it pretty quickly, probably.
Yeah, we could get it pretty quick, I feel.
Yeah, he, he could.
He's already getting, he's already done a referral on this.
On the second one.
Do we have a referral?
Yeah.
And what does that referral remind us?
He approved the septic system, provided there's a connection for the sewer at a later date.
I'm satisfied that...
Yeah, it's coming. There's no getting around it.
So we're not going to wait for Board of Health because we already have a recommendation? Is that what it, okay. Is anyone ready to close? Do you have any more questions?
Oh, I do. Nick, I'd like to clarify the, the mix of the units here. In your original presentation, you said there'd be eight two-bedrooms, two one-bedrooms, and two three-bedrooms. And then later, I think orally, you said there'd be 10 two-bedrooms, one one-bedroom and one three-bedroom. What are your, what's the mix of units?
10, 1 and 1.
10, 1 and 1. So you changed it from the original application?
Yeah, I didn't remember that.
Well, let's see, I read your application, and you did have a different number.
Then we must have changed it at some point along the way. But we, we submitted even to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund before we withdrew the request was 10, 1 and 1.
10, 1 and 1. So it's 10 two-bedroom, one-bath units, one one-bedroom, one-bath unit, and one three-bedroom, one-bath unit.
Correct.
One question.
Go ahead, go for it.
Noreen, just to be clear, when this, originally, it was 12 rental properties, those all would, even though three were affordable, but all 12 would have been counted towards the shy as rental properties?
Correct.
Now, we're only adding three units to the shy, is that correct?
Correct.
That's ownership, thank you.
Do we have a designation of what units are going to be affordable, by the way? Did you do that?
No, but we can put it in the conditions. It really doesn't matter to us. We know we need to mix them up through there, you know, 1A, 4A, 6A, whatever you want.
Well, for example, we have one, one two-bed, one one-bedroom and one three-bedroom, so we can't, there's no discretion there. They're either affordable or they're not.
Well, two one-bed, two two-bedrooms would be affordable, and either one of the three could be affordable. We'd prefer the one, naturally, but, okay. And the foundation sizes are the same on all the buildings, so...
Chairman, I, let me just ask a question. You say we could designate in the conditions, but this is your development or your client's development? And I don't think this board should just pick the ones they want necessarily, so that you can then appeal it, because it's not the right one.
I'll pick them, I'll pick them, and you can add, vote on them to add them into the...
I don't think the rest of the board agrees with this.
Okay. Well, fine.
I just don't want to leave anything...
Yeah. I, I can't imagine appealing over which unit was appointed, left or right.
No, I think what you need to determine is, clearly, they're going to be two two-bedroom units. The question comes into the one-bedroom and the three-bedroom, and how that's going to be dealt with.
So the 25%, it's not by bedrooms, it's by, just by units?
By units.
Right. But it's supposed to be in, in equal, it's supposed to be in equal distribution. So the problem is that when you only have one three-bedroom unit, as opposed to four, so traditionally, you would have four, and one would become affordable, and the three would be market. But you don't have a way to do that here.
No, but you, you just count the total bedrooms, and 25% of that, I would...
It should just be one of each.
That would make sense, which is probably why the state won't let it.
Yeah. Well, why can't we do that? And we make sense, and let him fight us if he doesn't like it.
So one of each?
One of each. One, one, and one, three, one together.
Yeah. What do you think?
Nick? One of each?
We'd like to do unit 1A.
Of bedrooms, I guess.
Oh, well, two, we'd like to do two, two bedrooms.
What's the total number of bedrooms in this thing?
So it's two times 12, 24. Two, it averages out to two per unit.
I think you should have one two-bedroom, one one-bedroom, one three-bedroom.
Yeah. That's six. It should be six bedrooms. The way you're proposing, it's only five bedrooms.
About three two-bedrooms.
That, that works for me, too. I think that's, actually, I think that's the best. But it should be six bedrooms.
We'll do, we'll do three two-bedrooms, that's fine.
I mean, because six is a quarter of 24. Six, you know, if there's 24 bedrooms, six of them should be affordable.
And I think it's required by unit, not by bedroom.
Why are we going to require it by bedroom and let him fight us? He just said he'd do...
We don't want him to fight us.
Well, he just, he just agreed that three, three...
Three two-bedrooms is fine with me.
Yeah, that gives you your six bedrooms, and that's 25 percent.
So three two-bedrooms.
Yeah, and twos are the most sought-after in the thing, so I think that's best, and we're not getting short-changed the bedroom.
He just told us last hearing that the one-bedrooms are the hot ones.
Yeah.
Just told us last hearing.
Yeah, well, I mean...
Ones in studios really are the least, the least need-filled, the most needed and the least being built, one in studios.
Twos, twos are the magic...
Twos are popular, yeah, it certainly is.
A mother and a child, a mother and two children. I mean, that's what we're concerned with.
Brother and sister.
Let's move along here. Are you, is everyone comfortable with closing tonight? We'll do the waiver and...
I guess so. Is the board comfortable with three two-bed, two-bedroom units being designated affordable?
That's the best way to do it.
I'm okay.
All right. And then you just require that they be evenly distributed, so it's not one building that is...
He's going to pick and tell us which ones.
1A, 4A, 6B.
Good with me. Motion to pause.
Do we close before the waiver list, though? I don't think we should, because we might need input.
So the board, in order to close, you want to make sure that you have all the information in the file?
Right.
And that you are not looking to get anything further, because once you close, that's, there's no more information to the file.
I think we should do waiver first. I feel.
I would have to agree with everyone.
Is everyone all right with doing that? Okay.
Yeah, I don't really have any...
All right, so the copy we have is August 14.
So you're not going to vote the waivers now?
No.
Is there any potential problems?
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah. You would obviously vote the waivers at the end, right?
I just wanted to know if there's any information we may need before we...
Absolutely.
May I suggest that we read them off, make sure that the board is satisfied?
Satisfied, and nobody has any potential issues that could...
Right, but we would not be voting on them.
No.
That sounds great.
And I, for one, don't have any. We'll vote for one of them.
They're all, I mean, Tony's the only one that had an issue with number three, right?
I only have something here with three waivers on it. It's called devised waiver request.
I don't have the number six either.
Yeah.
I'll read them off, if that's all right.
Yeah, no problem.
So, number one, Article 5, 240-19A, the zoning bylaw allows one single-family home per lot, requesting a waiver from the requirement to allow us to build six duplex buildings, 12 units of the property. That's the standard waiver to allow 40 units. Second waiver, Article 14, 240-69, the zoning bylaw limits the maximum lot coverage for structures, paving and parking, no more than 40 percent. Requesting a waiver from this requirement that allows us to have 49 percent lot coverage for structures, paving and parking.
Right.
Third request of waiver, Article 21, 240-99, Coastal Pond Overlay District. Site is located in the Green Pond Overlay District. We ask that the board find that the proposed Title V system is adequate and appropriate for the proposed development. Property has less than five lots, and has less than five acres, and is located in a stabilization area. Furthermore, the Board of Health will require review and approval of the Title V system prior to installation. Town plans to extend sewer along Acapescot Road in about five to six years. Have a design on site with sewer manhole approximately 50 feet off Acapescot Road to allow for easy connection should the sewer become available in the future. And it becomes mandatory that advanced treatment is unavoidable. To install AI systems would now be cost prohibitive.
Okay.
Number four, Article 14, 240-60, 6D, stipulates there shall be only one dwelling per lot. We are requesting a waiver from this requirement to allow us to build six duplex buildings. Standard. Article 23, 243E, requires the developer to reduce the impact where possible for removal of trees with four-inch trunk diameters. The site design includes location of buildings, driveways, walkways, and grading are such that most, if not all, trees, except those on property lines, will be cleared. We request a waiver from this requirement as our landscape plans allow us for new buildings, plantings of trees and shrubs.
Okay.
The sixth, Article 24, 240-17, requesting a procedural waiver to the peer review suggestion that planning board review is required. There's a planning board referral on file.
I think we have that power anyway, so...
It's with the sole authority anyway, so...
Can we just go back to five, just so I can ask a question? On the, are there any substantial trees that you're aware of that are going to be, that one might endeavor to save?
I don't think so, in my opinion. They're all pretty new trees. There used to be farmland there, and everything that's there is, even though they're big-sized trees, it used to be farmland, so they're not that old.
I just wonder if there was, you know, so there's nothing...
There's no specimens.
No, no specimen trees.
Okay. We can condition the landscape plan, and this picture looks pretty, but all that green practically is not on his property.
Right.
It's on other people's properties. So we can condition the trees.
Yeah, we listed how many trees we're putting in and showed where they would be, so...
And there are some, they look small, but I can see them on this...
Well, we're starting with two and a half-inch palo, so...
Yep. All right, so I think the only one we hung up on is the coastal...
But that's a separate vote, right?
A separate waiver. It's number three.
It's a vote on this, on the waiver.
Right, it's a vote on the waiver.
I would suggest, through you, Madam Chairman, is to just inquire if the board is satisfied, or do they need additional information?
Yeah.
I am satisfied with the information I have so far.
Okay. So we're all set to close?
Motion to pause.
I'll second the motion.
Mark gave it.
Mark gave the close, and we have a second? No further discussion? We're all set?
Yeah.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. All right.
So, does the closing mean that a decision is going to be written and reviewed at the next meeting? Is that what that means?
Sixty days?
Forty days.
Forty days.
Yeah. I'm sorry?
Forty days. A decision within 40 days.
Yeah, okay. And would we be, would you mind if we got a copy of it a week ahead of time, just so we could review it? And if there's any not, not informational, testimonial-type changes, but if we see a date wrong or something, that, so we don't have to do scribbler errors and things, we can at least point it out?
They don't trust us?
No, it's not, it happens. It happens, you know.
The one that doesn't give us the stuff a week early wants his stuff a week early now.
Well, you know, you can discuss conditions.
Come on now, back at ya.
You just can't add new testimony, that's all.
It's up to Noreen, as usual, the gatekeeper.
It is pretty much up to Noreen, not us.
She has a lot on her plate.
So, right now, I think we'd be looking to review a draft decision on November 14. I cannot swear a firm or promise that I would have it completed a week ahead of that time, given the volume that we currently have. I can make best efforts.
All we can ask for.
Our schedule is crazy. It really is crazy.
I know.
I guess what I would do is ask the board if there are specific findings or conditions that you consider some of those now. Certainly email me.
Okay.
Are you asking us to go into discussion about this? Don't the conditions have? Or do you email them?
I think if, you know, if you have some specific things, it's ideal to say so. I mean, you know, there are a lot of, I think, typical conditions that we put in. One of the things, like I know that there's concerns about trees, and we typically advise the applicants that it, trees that are on a lot line are considered to be shared and cannot be removed without permission of the abutter, because the tree would be jointly owned. So that, for example, would be their responsibility to identify.
Madam Chair, then I have to ask a question. I, as one member, have not prepared to give any conditions yet, without having gone through this myriad of paperwork and listing them, and then maybe giving them to us by the administrator.
I agree. I'm not so...
It's fine.
I'm not, it's just not clear enough on some things.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Without reading my notes.
You can do homework and get better prepared. I agree, I feel the same way.
Fine, and perhaps we should have a date that they should be submitted to Noreen to give her a break, too.
That's true, that, too. Let's look at our calendars.
I was going to pick on you and tell you Halloween, just because...
All right. The end of October, we have to submit.
Yeah, I guess I would, you know, maybe...